We are now recording.
All right. Terrific. Well, welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, April 15th, Tax Day, in case you forgot, last reminder. Time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order a reminder for anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward, provide your name and address for the record. We are recording this meeting, and it is a public record. Lastly, I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
And seconded.
So I have a motion from Trustee Rodden to approve the evening's agenda and a second by Trustee Romans. Is there any other further discussion or questions on this evening's agenda? Very well. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries six to zero. At this time, let's rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number five this evening is public appearances. So, public appearances are for anyone in the audience who is here this evening to speak to an item not on the agenda. So be aware, when you come and share with us what's on your mind, we can take no action this evening. However, we may refer this to staff for further review and to discuss at a future meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to an item not on the agenda? Please come forward now. Ms. Mutz, you're more than welcome. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, even though we all know you. And tell us what's on your mind.
It's been a long time since I've been here. I forgot how business is conducted. My name is Joan Mutz. I reside at 830 Longtail Beach Road, Swamaco. And I'm here to make a request, I guess, of the board to do some checking and letting me know, I guess, what it is with our adjacent neighbor. I'm here with my sister this evening. We reside at 830 Longtail, and our property borders the boat club now. It was Shipyard Marine for years. I was here, I think, going on eight years ago, when Andy Howard of Shipyard Marine, Howard Realty, made a request to have that property turned into rezoned as a planned development district. So I would like to know, basically, what that entails and if there may be activity going on or workmanship. Like I said, it was about seven or eight years ago that this took place, and the planned district was approved, and there was an ordinance as well. But last October, I called our zoning administrator and talked with Steve, who has always been very accommodating at answering my questions, because he knows, over time, how I have been personally against, basically, what has transpired on that property last October. The reason I called Steve was because there was construction going on, another building taking place. And I said, being an adjacent property owner, I said, we joined the Marine property on the north. We had joined it on the north, on the west. Longtail Beach Road is the south boundary, and on the east, of course, the waters of Green Bay. And, well, then, it took a while. Steve did talk with me, and I asked him for answers as to what was going on there. I said, it's no longer Shipyard Marine. And then, come to find out, I found out later, more activity as to what was happening, because my sister came home and brought the placemat of our Deerfield Diner, which said that Marine 365 Lifestyle Boat Club. So it's now become a boat club, and no one seems to really know or understand. I don't see how legally Shipyard Marine, Andy Howard, almost eight years ago, came to the board for the planned district. What does the district entail? This is another new concept. When that property started development, actually, it was a condominium and a dockaminium, and now it's turned into a boat club. But I would think that if Shipyard Marine no longer exists, and according to the ad on the placemat, it said that, imagine, it's a new concept, imagine the ease of boating without owning, using our cost-effective solution at a fraction of the cost of traditional boat ownership. If this be the case, like the dockaminiums, if this must have all been transferred, there were some private owners of the docks, but there hasn't been much activity at the dock site. So I guess what I would like for someone, if they know this evening, to give me some response, otherwise, to someone, either the board, or a commission, or a committee, or staff people, checking into this. Because legally, I don't understand how someone can change a whole operation. Yes, it's nautical-related. It was Shipyard Marine. But at the same time, now, all advertisements are centered on this boat club, and it's going to be a membership. I don't know what the fees will be. I do not even know who the present owners are, but the boats are going to have to come from somewhere. There must be new people involved, et cetera. So can anyone right now shed any light? I know you can't take action tonight, but does anybody know what I'm talking about?
I do not. That it's, I'm not familiar with the term of a boat club, as opposed to a marina.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the term of boat club as it compares to a marina. But I know a person who can find out and make this, you know, find this information, and perhaps bring it back to the next meeting for us.
That would be very helpful, because personally, to have discovered, you know, if you wanted to add on to your home, I'm sure you'd have to come and get a permit. And if you don't, if you get the permits at the same time, why aren't the neighbors, especially in our case, I mean, the frontage, the northern-south boundaries of that lot, it goes in from the bay to our driveway, and that storage, there were four buildings on the site, as it was. Now it's wall-to-wall boats on land. Boats initially, way back in time, were not even supposed to be outside. They were all supposed to be undercover in the storage building, which is now, I don't know what's going on in the storage building. But I took a ride just to see what it's like, and it's wall-to-wall boats on the property, and there were, I didn't take account, maybe there were no boats at the dock sites. So anyway, there's something, all of a sudden, to have discovered construction going on, an addition, another addition to the operation there, and then to find out that it's actually a boat club, I would like to see some investigation, because it's my understanding, there was a condominium there, two, what do you call it, zero, lot line?
Zero lot line.
Zero, whatever. It was one condominium, and I appreciate and thank Steve, because he did inform me that he went, and when he went and gave the permit for them to demolish the condominium, he let me know that he issued the permit for demolition, and that took place on March 27th and 28th, so it's now gone. What used to be a quiet residential, rural residential area, has really become more traffic involved. I'm concerned about the safety, the boating, and everything else that's, even when I came home from the post office today, there's hardly a time in the summer weather when you're not meeting a boat coming or going, unless this new club, if they're going to own the boats and how it's going to operate, I do not know. But at the same time, I think it is an issue that should be looked into. It seems that whatever, I hate to say it, but it's not been the most happy environment to be a neighbor of an operation that has been a thorn in your side for 30-plus years of your life. So I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
And I'm not, I don't know if I made any sense. I'm a little nervous.
Oh, no, perfectly, no. So we'll leave you with an action. So zoning administrator, Dunks, if you would, could you pull the paperwork on this PDD and bring this to the next meeting to share with us what's allowed by that PDD? Just kind of go over it with us, what's allowed by that PDD, and what's not allowed by that PDD? And if there's any research that can be done to understand, I don't know if it's a boat club in name only, you know, instead of a marina, or what the difference is in a boat club, and how it may be impacted by a PDD. I don't think there would be, but we'll look at that and bring it back to the next meeting, and hopefully, we'll see you there, and we can go over this.
I, for one thing, I've got in the folder back there, a placemat that has this advertisement in it, and it has one of those little cue, you can focus and pull a packet, this little advertisement on the diner's placemat doesn't cover, but there are about 12 or 14 pages that can come off from this.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So we'll pull that information and then bring that back to the next meeting, and hopefully, you can join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I ask any questions?
You certainly, by all means.
Was there a permit issued for construction as well, or just demolition?
No, there was a permit for the construction. Your PDD allowed for boat sales and leasing. The boat club is only a division of Marine 365. They're still selling boats. They're still operating their off-water storage and whatnot, whatever you want to call that, for their slips. The building was a small maintenance, additional, single maintenance bay, which was in the PDD. Permits were issued for that.
Okay, so it went by the book?
Well, let's look at it and bring it up for the next meeting. I mean, we can put this on the agenda, and we can look at this in some detail. It'll be in our packets to review. I'd encourage everybody else to, you know, go, and we can probably look that up, Shipyard Marine, and try to get some more definition from a website in terms of what is a boat club versus a marina. So we'll take, thank you for bringing that forward.
Excuse me, I have one PS, just to give you a monumental situation that we've lived with for these many years. At the time of the application to become a PDD, there were four buildings on that site. And now, of course, you know, back in time, the boats weren't supposed to be on the land and outside. They were supposed to be in storage. The storage building itself is bigger than the Green Bay Pres相识 Building downtown. From the time, every day when we ingress and egress, we have to pass the length of that building, which is 200 feet long. It's 35 feet tall, probably one of the largest business operations on the shores of Green Bay waters, which isn't very, very nice, and especially for us now as we're aging. But in any event, it's something that I really would appreciate, and thank you for hearing me tonight, because I want this checked out to see if there's not an overextension of activity taking place.
All right, we will do the investigation. Thank you, Ms. Mutz.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who likes to, would like to come forward on issue not on the agenda? Provide your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Anyone else for a public appearance? All right, very good. Let's move on to item number six. Item number six A this evening is, item A is a five-year award for Matt Lewis Utilities III. Director Smits.
All right, thank you. Matt Lewis started his employment here in January of 2019. It's hard to believe that it's been five years already. Matt comes to work every day, ready to go and take on any new challenges that we come across. And believe us, over the last five years, we've seen some pretty unique things in the water and sewer department. Things that you can't plan for, can't expect, it's just there they are, and Matt's just jumped right into it and taken the lead, and been an instrumental part of how we get things done. Without having a utility background, he has excelled extremely well in the field, taken over pretty much, maybe a year or so after he started here, as our lead utility operator, and hasn't looked back. Matt is a large part of why, this last December, we had such a glowing review from our DNR Water Supply Engineer. If you guys remember our audit from this last year, the DNR recommended that those guys should be acknowledged at a public meeting, large part of what Matt Lewis does here for the village of Swamaco. He's a definition of a team player, and always able to help wherever needed, no matter what they have going on. So I can't thank him enough for everything he's accomplished in five years, and I hope for at least five more. And tonight, I'm happy to give him the certificate from the village, and it looks like you and Cory are going on a nice date at Chives.
Thank you. You may want to think about your choice in company, though, in terms of dinner at Chives. Oh, boy. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your five years, and we hope to see you around here another five years. All right, item six B this evening is the 10-year service award. This one is for Andy Smits, Director of Public Works. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So Andy started in the Public Works Department in 2014, and has risen to the prestigious position of Weed Commissioner. He also serves as the village's Public Works Director since March of 2018. He oversees many of our village services, like roads, the sewer and water utility, stormwater, engineering, garbage and recycling, and park maintenance. Andy has a unique skill set as a Public Works Director, in that he is proficient in not only his technical understanding of how to get the work done, but also skilled in interacting with staff and the public effectively. Swamaco is very lucky to have someone like him leading the Public Works Department, and I want to thank him for his 10 years of service, and hopefully, 10 more. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Andy, thank you. So is there anybody who'd like to share anything with regard to the two certificates of service?
10 years? Really?
It seems like yesterday.
Huh.
That means you're all getting older.
Well.
Well, you certainly aren't. Look at your boyish grin.
You've turned into a dapper young man.
We're all so glad up here that we had something to do with that. Well, thanks, Andy, for everything you've done. You've been a great asset to the village. You've given us some consistency, a lot of consistency. You've built your staff and continue to build your staff, and really, there, we can't ask much more of a Public Works Director. There are many challenges to come. I particularly am thrilled with your tenure as Weed Commissioner, because I hardly see any in my yard. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, very good. Let's move on. Item number seven this evening is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of previous minutes of the Village Board from March 18th, 2024. Item B, February 2024 Animal Control Report. Item C, March 2024 Municipal Court Report. Item D, March 2024 Recreation Report. The HISA Temporary Class B Fermented Malt Beverage and Wine Licenses for the HISA Baseball Tournament, July 19 through 21, 2024, Calaveras Springs and Idyllwild Park. Do I have a motion on the Consent Agenda items or discussion on them?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion from Trustee Eckert to approve this evening's Consent Agenda and a second from Trustee Rodden. Any other further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Okay, we are off to, item number eight. Item number eight A this evening is Ordnance 2024-04, repealing Section 2.11, Parent 1, Parent B, reducing the number of election inspectors. Second reading, Deputy Clerk Bergen.
All right, thank you, President. So this is the second reading of Ordnance 2024-04. The first reading was conducted at the March 18th, 2024 Village Board Meeting, after staff was given direction to prepare an ordinance to repeal Swamaco Municipal Code 2.111B, that gives the village clerk, at the clerk's discretion, the authority to reduce the election inspectors to no less than three inspectors per polling location. This authority was given to the village clerk on February 5th, 2024, Village Board Meeting, where the village board took action to approve Ordnance 2024-01. This allowable action is defined in Wisconsin State Statute 7.32, Change of Election Official Numbers. The governing body of any municipality may reduce the number of election officials and modify or rescind any similar previous action. No such action may reduce the number of officials at a polling place to less than three. If this Ordnance 2024-04 is approved, the village clerk will schedule no less than five election inspectors per polling location for each election.
Are there any questions for Deputy Clerk Bergen on this item? This is the second reading, so we've been on this road a few times before. Any discussion amongst the board?
I brought it back, and I think it should be back on the books.
Okay. Would you like to offer a motion?
Okay. To approve Ordnance 2024-04, repealing Section 2.111B.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Eckert to approve the Ordnance 2024-04, repealing Section 2.11, Parent 1, Parent B. Is there a second to Trustee Eckert's motion?
I'll second.
We have a second from Trustee Romans. Any other further questions or discussions?
We have a roll call.
It is a roll call, yes. Any further discussion or questions on this item?
I'll just make one statement, for the reason for my wanting it to be back to five, is I don't want to have the clerk caught in a situation where they're always trying to figure out how to make the number of elector, or election officials, less and less and less to meet a budget. Voting and operation of voting and having enough poll workers available at any given time is an important part of any government. I have no question of ethics or anything of that nature. It's not about that. It's about how, what can sometimes happen is if we keep that number lower, we'll push lower constantly, just to keep budgets lower, because that's human nature. And for voting, I would rather just keep it at five.
So I have one question on this, perhaps.
Sure.
Mister Administrator, you can maybe, were you, I'm sorry, were you through?
No. No, I misunderstood your question.
Oh, no, no, for the administration.
Yep, I got that.
So should this item be repealed this evening, would we be able to, so circumstances being appropriate for a later election, would we be able to bring this forward again to reduce the number of electors?
Yes.
Okay. One last question. Sorry, it just made me think of one last question. So from the reduction that we did do with the number of electors, did we discuss what the cost savings to the village was for that?
I don't think we had an exact number on it, but it's, what do we pay the election inspectors? Is it $12 or $13 an hour?
Yeah.
12 for a regular one, and then 15 for a chief. And we had one chief and two other workers for the February poll, and we had 30 voters. So, you know.
Okay.
It's probably $200 or so dollars per person a day.
Okay, so I guess I'm just going to outline this. I've been back and forth on this somewhat. And, you know, based on the fact that we can go ahead and we can re-implement three on this, the idea of savings, and, you know, quite frankly, with the way the outside world is, and politics in general, you know, I don't really want any disparities or any potential issues at our local level when it comes to the election. So I'm going to go back on this one, and I'm going to vote to repeal this at this time. Anybody else? Otherwise, I'll ask for the vote.
So February 5th, we set up this ordinance for a reason, to allow autonomy for the clerk to decide how many people they need in an election. Doesn't happen very often that we have less than five. So why would we go back through the work again and change this again if that happens again? Why don't we just leave it as it is, and allow the clerk and our administration to operate as they should? And I believe moving this back to five is truly micromanaging our leadership. There's no reason for it. Allow them, if there's only going to be a small block of voters, such as this particular circumstance, where it was just Pulaski School District, allow them to go down to three. They should have the autonomy to be able to do that. That's why we pay them.
Yeah, I agree with those statements, as I did the last time, too, in the first reading.
Okay. All right. Anybody who hasn't spoken?
May I speak again, Mr. President?
We've got a motion on the floor and a second, and we're having to discuss, by all means.
Right, that's what it's about. So I'm not, I wasn't present when this ordinance was changed, but it had to have been a reason for the change, right? The change is obvious. We are looking at an election where we're going to have so few people, that to have five people at each station would be ridiculous overkill, right? But instead of having a, kind of like a safety valve on that, in order to get that to get down to three, there had to be a revision to the ordinance. If I were to look at this and just, from a clean slate, I would put it back the way it was, at five, and then I would put some language in there, something along the lines that should the clerk, no earlier than four weeks prior to the election, no later than two weeks prior to the election, perceive that the number of voter turnout is going to be so small that it doesn't require a full band of people, that they can come to the board, and a simple majority of the board would allow the clerk to go forward with that smaller number.
Okay. Well, we may have to wait for a later date, because we have a motion.
That's fine.
We've got a motion on the floor, and we've got a second. And I think everybody has an opportunity, unless, Trustee Neto, you have anything you'd like to share? Otherwise, everyone's had a chance to speak. So I would go ahead and take that roll call vote.
Okay. Trustee Andrews.
Nay.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Nay.
Trustee Rodden.
Nay.
Trustee Romans.
Aye.
Trustee Sanders. President Van Rossum.
Aye. So in that case, the motion doesn't pass, because it's a tie.
Yes.
Yep. Let me stay at three.
Okay. Moving on. Item 8B, Ordnance 2024-06, modifying Chapter 2.07 of the Municipal Code Regarding Committees. Second reading, Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So this is the second reading of Ordnance 2024-06. No changes were made from the first reading back on March 18th. And just as a refresher, this cleans up our code as it relates to the Cemetery Committee, and changes the section title to Director. I also noticed on the ordinance, it says, adopted on April 1st, so we would just change that to the 15th, should the board approve it. Are there any questions?
A couple of questions. The director doesn't have to be a village resident?
No.
Okay. And, let's see, in this one, it says, regulations for the operation and maintenance of any municipal cemetery. Is there any plans to make more than one? I mean, what?
You never know, but as of today, no, there is not.
Okay. Is the director, is that a term, or how does that work?
That is appointed by the Cemetery Committee, and as of today, there are no terms to it.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else with questions or comments, questions for Mr. Kaker?
One thing for Mr. Kaker. There was a comment in here about committee appointments beginning in April instead of May for everyone else. Is that, I don't see that in here.
So, pre, yep, sorry. Previously, in the code, there is a section that talks about appointments to committee will take place in May, so that will cover this committee as well.
Okay, so we just struck the part that said April.
Yeah, it would be duplicative if I put it in that chapter as well. So just like every other committee, you get appointed in the month of May.
Aye.
Is that the month we started it? That's why it was in February?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so unless there's any other discussion, I would offer a motion. I would offer a motion to approve Ordnance 2024-06 as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any other further comments? Let's do this as a roll call as well. Stay with the theme.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
I'll abstain. I don't really need to, but I will.
Trustee Romans.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Okay. We are off to item 8C, Woodfield Court Developers Agreement. Administrator Kaker. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So the village of Swamaco and Woodfield Court LLC entered into a development agreement on September 28th of 2018. This development is now known as the Woodfield Court Motor Condos off of East Deerfield Avenue. The developers have requested an amendment to the development agreement to facilitate the allowance of a marketing showroom, and to do so, they are requesting an amendment to exhibit H of the parent document, which is the additional restricted covenants. And I'll just read off what this add-on would do. It would allow for the operation of a retail storefront from any unit on the property, including signage on the applicable unit, which operations may include but are not limited to providing light vehicle repair services to customers, and the operation of a sales office, which is used for marketing vehicle repair and restoration services, which services are performed on an off-site location conditioned on meeting all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. So the decision for the village board tonight is to either move to approve or reject the Woodfield Court Development Agreement number one, or amendment number one. The developers are also here in the audience tonight if you may have any questions about this specific process. Any questions from the board?
I guess I'm really skeptical. I mean, as I was when you started this, but you did a very nice job on it. It's a nice, but I'm skeptical because a very big part of that was no commercial, no, it wasn't going to be a commercial situation, and now we're getting an exception here.
Would the developers like to, would you like to come forward and share? Could you, yeah, come forward and provide your name and address so we have that on the recording?
Hello, my name is Grant Heim, Woodfield Court Motor Condos at 2096 East Deerfield Avenue.
And Brad Schmidt resides at 2455 Locksley Court in Swamaco.
Welcome.
Thank you. So for those who are not familiar, I know it's last minute, but I brought some photo books if you want to pass them around while we speak so you can get an idea of what it's like within our development.
Sure. Let's start down in the end and return to the middle.
So to Michelle's point, she is correct. We do, we are not looking to change the scope of the development, but we had a unique opportunity to partnership with a company out of Appleton. And if anybody is aware of Woodfield Court, it's predominantly a car community, privately-owned garage condominiums where people with multiple vehicles, larger vehicles can store them. And recently, we have been working with a company out of Appleton called MPI, and they have their own set of facilities in Appleton, about 75,000 square feet throughout, a chrome shop, glass shop, upholstery, body, paint. And we really realize that people in Green Bay do not know what's going on in Appleton and vice versa. So what MPI would like to do is construct a condo at Woodfield Court Motor Condos as a show facility, not as a business, but if it wouldn't be staffed, it would, it would not have employees, it would be during events that we host or members within, but it would be a place to where somebody in Green Bay who has a classic car in Swamaco that needs restoration, say it needs glass, body, paint, upholstery, instead of trailering their car down to Appleton, they could come over to Woodfield Court, and it would just be a consultation in a sales area, and they would look at the car, and they would then facilitate which facility in the Fox Valley would go to. So it's really more of a, it's more of a expanding the community from Green Bay to Appleton and having more resources. And what brings it to the board is they, we do not want to cut any corners, and neither does MPI, so we wanted to make sure we could future-proof this to where if anything were ever to come up, everything is perfectly legal within the village of Swamaco and within our own restrictions that we have within Woodfield Court. So I really appreciate what you said, Michelle, about what we've done because we know that, you know, a lot of people were skeptical when we came, but we first came to the board in 2018. We started construction in 2020. Our phase one improvements were due 11 of 21. We're happy to say we met and exceeded. Phase two is due 11 of 25, and as of now, we have met and exceeded, and we are on track for the end of this year to exceed our 1129 developers agreement. So this is by no means, we are not trying to open up our development because, you know, we need to bring in a different, you know, we're not trying to change directions and bring in a different group of people. I mean, this is a great partnership, and I understand that not everybody's car people, but if you are into cars, you know what it's like to try to find a glass guy, try to find that, and it's, it's a very close knit, and to have the benefit of them being here and being able to go down there, it's, it's just a massive opportunity for us to partner with them. And keep in mind, we still have our own restrictions within our development. We're not allowing people to come in and do storefronts. We're not, you know, if, when I say that they're, you know, a high-end restoration company, yes, they do glass chrome and all that, but their restorations are six-digit plus cars. I mean, they're the, they're the world's most renowned Ferrari restoration company in the world. They have restored more Ferraris than Ferrari has. They've been in business for 40 years. They have 75 employees in the valley, like I said, 75,000 square feet. So they're, they're not trying to come up here to do any type of work. It's just a consulting and a 3D billboard to where people can walk in and they can understand what they do more. It's, you know, Brad and I were just fascinated when we go down to Appleton, and it's like, where are these cars from? We've never seen any of them, and they come up here, and it's the same thing. It's just, we're just trying to bridge that gap and...
Can people that don't own condos there take their car in as well?
They can by appointment through MPI. So say if Joe C. in Swamaco said, hey, I see you have a condo at Woodfield Court. When can I meet you and when can we talk? It would be an appointment-only type situation, but it's, it's also a very high-end exclusive. I mean, it's not knocking what any repair shops or anything do, but it's not...
You wouldn't be in any direct competition with anyone around?
This isn't a brake job on a Honda, you know, that type of stuff. I mean, not to knock it, but that's not what's going on.
It's a different animal. Is there, as far as building something like this, do you have to have commercial codes?
They're building that they're going to want their showroom in will have to go through commercial plan approval, yes.
Okay.
And they are aware of that, and as are we.
Everything that's there today had state-approved plans at one point. They just didn't continue that because they're residential use units, but they are built to the commercial standard right now.
The current ones are as well?
Yes. They, they actually, the first nine that went up had commercial plan approval. We, they just didn't continue that with the rest of them because when it's in residential use, it doesn't have to meet that, so why give the state
Okay.
1,200 bucks or whatever it was for each building that was built for that plan approval?
But they would have to go through all the...
This one, they would have to.
We, we still continue to build per commercial code because, you know, Bayland builders, they build commercials, so we stuck with that. But they would go through the egress, the exit signs, whatever, whatever they need to do. Like, like Steve was saying, we did in the front, we did exit signs and all that, but we, at that time, we didn't need to do it, so we, we stopped, but they also would. So when it says the use of light automotive, it, that's more in the terms of a consultation. Somebody could pull in their car, and they would look it over and assess what needs to be done, basically work out the deal and send it to whatever off-site location it would be. So there really would not be work done there, but they, they are a big company, and everybody just wants it to be on the up and up. So what is written in there is what the attorneys agreed upon for verbiage that would satisfy MPI and us.
As far as we're looking at tonight, this is just for approval of this one, correct?
The way it's worded, it's not specific to a specific business, no.
So you could continue to do this, then, by, by a yes vote that would allow you to do a lot of different things as well?
I mean, per that, I, you could look at it like that, yes, but we still have our own rules and regulations within our community. And we, to date, we have 50 condos built. You know, we started in 2020, we're at 50. By the end of this year, we'll be at about 68. It's between 64 and 68. We still got a couple up in the air, including this one. But we have not had that come up at all. It's not what we're trying to do. It's not what we're looking at, but for our members within our community, when they heard MPI was interested in coming, the community is excited. The people that we know locally throughout the car community are excited, so I know everybody always kind of feeds the line and say, yeah, just this one time, but for us...
Maybe it's none of my business, but is anybody not excited about it?
No, everybody's excited about it. I think I, I could go on and on about cars, so I won't bore you, but if you saw what these guys had and you liked cars, you'd be excited about it.
And the other thing about this, even if they put a storefront, they're going to be what, call it three streets back? And when you talk about a street, that's back-to-back condos? So I think they're two or three streets back?
They are three streets into the development, and they face the east, and our own rules and regulations do not allow, you know, signage. We allow a small sign on the door, 28-inch by 28-inch. But how the attorneys had that road, it does not in any way, there's no signage that's going to be visible to anybody that's outside of our community gates.
So really, you're not going to know that business is there unless you're part of the community?
You're not, and it's funny, when you look up MPI, they've been in the Fox Valley for 40 years, and most people don't know they're there.
But it's, it's a showroom, so they're not doing actual work there.
No.
There's, it's not, so you have an office on site. Is that office staffed?
No.
You don't?
Appointment only or during our events.
Your current office.
Oh, yeah, that's not staffed either. Brad and I are in and out every day.
Okay.
But it is, it's not.
So you really don't have any kind of business that's staffed on a daily basis on site?
No, not at all.
So...
I mean, if you drive past that, I don't think, you know, traffic generation, I don't think it's going to produce any more traffic than already is currently going in and out of there as it is. So, and I don't, I don't think you're ever going to have, even if you build out all the way to the back, and you may have, you know, another similar company like this, they're going to be showrooms, they're going to be consultation areas for, you know, to show off what they can do and what they have. It's not going to be actual work being performed.
No.
I think what you guys have done, has anybody been to their Cars and Coffee? It's a pretty amazing event, and it really brings in dollars. I'd like to actually know what the dollars that it brings into Swamaco with our gas stations and our restaurants and stuff, but I think everything that these guys have done over there has been high-end.
And our members love the area. They love the Anapi, they love seeing the things going on and the growth, and, and it's a good caliber of people. And when Brad and I started it, of course, that's what we hoped for, but you never know until you know. Well, now that we're in, in at 50, it's, you know, we got a lot of names that you would know around town, doctors you probably go to, stuff like, it's just a great group, and it's great for the area, and we believe MPI would be great for the area, too, because they're coming into town, and like Dan said, they're getting gas, they're eating food, they're, they're exploring the town, and, you know, so many people have came in, and most of our members are local. But by local, we have DePere, we have Aston Park, the historic areas, you know, stuff like that where they can't build garages, and they get out, and they're like, hey, have you ever heard of this place called Victory Village? It's like, yeah. It's like, they're coming out here, and they're going to stuff like that that they normally would not have because they didn't have an interest in Swamaco. They didn't, they weren't part of it, now they are.
Good. Any other questions for the gentleman?
I'm not sure. I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm not skeptical about them. I'm more skeptical about if you decide to do a bunch of condos like that.
I mean, I understand that, but...
And, and just for, I mean, because it's not supposed to be commercial businesses.
Yep. I understand that, but if, come out to a Cars and Coffee, we start May 11th, grab a donut, take a walk around, and you'll see that it would not benefit us to be outside of the realm of what we are doing. You know, the people that are there would not like it, they wouldn't appreciate it. I mean, what we are doing is very niche to a group of people, and we are in no way looking to upset them by putting in a clothing store or some, you know, something like that, you know. I mean, you know what I mean?
A mattress vendor, that'd be great.
Yeah, we're not selling rug...
No, I get it. I mean, I don't see a muffler shop fitting in here.
Yeah, the biggest thing we tried to create with the project was the community aspect of it, and so we certainly don't want to deviate from that, you know, dream in the beginning of what we, you know, created with our, the business plan vision that we presented initially, so...
What's the range of, so just to get some idea, what is the range of cost into each one of these condos that's out there? Like, what's your, what's your low end and what's your highest end right now sitting out there?
They don't have a low end.
Right. Okay, so what is your low end?
So to get in, you know, to get in with the most base unit, we're around $105 a square foot right now, so about $149,000, and by the end of this year, we go up to about almost a million dollars and do a condo. And we kind of fall anywhere within that range. We sell it as a white box and the imagination. We liken it to look at the unfinished basement of your house, and however you dream you want to finish it off is how you can finish it off. And the people have taken it, and they have ran with it. If you look through any of the...
They sure have.
Yeah, and it's only, MPI would bring it up to that next stage and just make it that much more appealing to new buyers, current owners.
Okay.
Do you entertain a motion?
Please.
I'd like to move to approve.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Woodfield Court Development Agreement Amendment Number One.
We have a motion on the floor by Trustee Romus to approve the Woodfield Court Development Agreement with the amendment number one. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Trustee Andrews. Any other further questions or discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please? I guess we don't need it, but I'm going to have one anyway.
All right. Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romus.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Item 8D is the Shidi Farms Second Edition Developers Agreement. Administrator Kaker, if you would.
Thank you. Give me one second here. So a contingency of the Shidi Farms Second Edition plat approval was the execution of a development agreement, and including your packet is a copy of that, which would fulfill this requirement. The most crucial part of this agreement is always the financial guarantee, which in this case is the cash escrow that the village can draw down on to pay for the project, which is just the extension of Prestine Lane. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
My only question is the unplotted lands that are left. What is the plan? I know that the road was supposed to originally go through from Prestine to Westline Road. What is the plan for that unplotted area? Because I know how much we love roundabout, or cul-de-sacs in Swamaco, and just if we can eliminate cul-de-sacs, that'd be great, but I, I don't know what, are they going to do straight lots, or what's your plan?
We're, we're enjoying a lot of heat along West Wayne Road there.
Yeah, good, I'm sorry, could we ask you to come forward and provide your name and address for the record so folks can hear this on the recording? Thank you.
Glenn Calvert, 2484 St. Pat's Drive. We're going to join it to Lot 8, and we don't know if we're going to sell it as one large chunk or what we're going to do with it.
Okay. How many acres is that?
It'll be over 10 acres.
That's what I thought, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate, that was just a...
Sure. Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Shidi Farms Second Edition Development Agreement as... as presented.
We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Rodden to approve the Shidi Farms Second Edition Development Agreement. Is there a second? I have a second from Trustee Netto. Any other further comments? Roll call, please.
All right. Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee, or I'm sorry, President Van Rossum.
Aye.
All right, motion carries six to zero.
Gentlemen, if you'd like your books back, I don't want to, don't, don't... No, please, go ahead. We don't want to hold you prisoner here. You've got lots of condos to build. Thank you, have a good evening. Okay. So, we are on to item number nine, Planning Commission Items. This is item 9A, a three-lot CSM requested by Dennis Krieger for SU 389-2 located at 3339 Northwood Road, zoning administrator dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at just over a 14-acre parcel here. We have rural residential ag and ag farmland preservation surrounding this with the non-metallic mine just to the northwest of this. There is a single-family home on the parcel right now that will remain on Lot 1. Lot 3 currently does have an active permit for an accessory garage. The applicant's son will be purchasing that lot, and is the one constructing the structure right now. Staff would recommend a condition that that construction of a dwelling be started within two years of the recording of the certified survey map. We do typically, you are required to have a primary residence before you can have an accessory garage. We would be creating a non-conforming lot by allowing that accessory garage on that lot. We do typically address those at some point during the CSM. All three lots do appear to meet all code requirements. The parcel is located in an area that's going to, that's shown to remain in rural, thus the two-acre minimum lot size is required. And your planning commission did recommend approval with the two conditions, construction of a dwelling started within two years of the recording, and then meeting requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Are there any questions for zoning administrator dunks?
I'll make a motion to approve a three-lot certified survey map for Dennis Krieger, as prepared by Wisconsin Land Surveying, Inc., on parcel SU 389-2, with the following conditions, construction of a dwelling on Lot 3 must be started within two years of the recording of the CSM, and that it meets the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Trustee Rodden that has been seconded by Trustee Romas to approve the three-lot certified survey map for Dennis Krieger, as prepared by Wisconsin Land Surveying Incorporated, on parcel SU 389-2, with the two conditions, construction of a dwelling on Lot 3 must be started within two years of the recording of the CSM, and item 2 meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Are there any other further comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Roll call.
A roll call?
Why not?
If you wish.
I'd be first.
All right.
Thank you.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. One request, the cost of that roll call vote. Could you please charge that to Trustee Romas? Thank you. All right. Item number 10, we are on item 10A, memorandum of understanding between Brown County Sheriff's Department and the Swamaco Fire Department regarding search-and-rescue responses on the Bay of Green Bay, Fox River, and any inland waters within Brown County. Chief Burtler, we get to hear from you.
Yes, thank you. The MOU formally establishes an agreement between the Brown County Sheriff's Office and the Swamaco Fire Department. The Brown County Sheriff's Office has jurisdiction over the Bay of Green Bay. I would like to make note of section 5, number 5, that states that this response is voluntary and at the discretion of the Swamaco Fire Department, so if they call in for our assistance, we can decline, and no, I guess, punishment to us. Our villages and authorities have looked this over, along with their attorneys, and just looking for approval to sign the MOU. Any questions?
It would have been a definite no without number 5.
That's why, that's why it's in there.
As long as you don't spread yourself too thin.
No, and that's exactly why that's in there.
Is there a particular reason why we would not respond if needed?
The only reason that, I mean, I can think of is if, we're going to have probably six to eight operators, if those operators are not available.
Okay, so if there's a structural fire here in the village?
Correct.
That kind of scenario?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, not everybody's going to drive the boat.
And when you get delivery of the boat?
It will be delivered on the 20, next week, Monday.
Oh, wow. Great.
We'll bring it here on the next village board meeting, so...
Right here.
In the pond?
Oh, not in the ponds, stop it for the pond.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Brown County Sheriff's Department and the Swamaco Fire Department, and instruction, and instruct, oh, instruct Chief Burtler to sign it as presented.
I'll second.
So, the motion has been offered by Trustee Rodden to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Brown County Sheriff's Office between the Brown County Sheriff's Office and the Swamaco Fire Department, with Chief Burtler being the signatory on behalf of Swamaco. That has been seconded by Trustee Romas. Any other further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries six to zero. So, thank you. Item 11, discussion on future agenda items. Anyone? Trustee Rodden.
I don't have any future agenda items to address.
No, you do not. Thank you for your service, thank you for the time you've spent on the board.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for reserving, not kicking me as much as you did when you started.
How many, how many years did you serve?
12.
Oof.
Thank you very much. All right. If there are no other further agenda items, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. I'll offer the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Give it to Dan.
The last, a second to Dan Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries six to zero. Happy trails.
It's all yours now. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Don't be a stranger.